Good evening. I'd like to call the voting meeting Monday, October 15th, 2012 to order, please.
Okay, Mayor Ron is absent tonight. Mayor Pro Tim Fleming.
Here.
The clerks here. Trustee Emery.
Here.
Trustee Glebina.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Trustee Seneca is absent. Manager Cyril.
Here.
Attorney Zemanak.
Here.
Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Public Works Director May.
Yes.
Acting Community Development Director Malik.
Here.
Administrative or Fire Administrative Department, Ella. That's it.
Please rise and join me in the pledge. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll start with the reports. The mayor has not left anything for us this evening, so I will go to the clerk.
Okay, I have a couple of items. I want to remind all our kids out there that Trick or Treat Trail is on Saturday, October 27th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. downtown Cass Avenue, and wish, of course, everybody a happy Halloween. And please be careful out there, kids, when you're trick-or-treating in the dark. Be careful, but have fun. And on Saturday, November 3rd, the police department at 500 North Cass will be holding their bicycle and miscellaneous property auction, and the preview of items is at 8:45 a.m., and the auction begins at 9:00. So if you're interested, go up, take a look. They usually have some fine items up there to sell. And most of all, the very last thing, I want to wish our mayor, Bill Ron, a very happy birthday. His birthday is in a week, and I certainly hope he's up and feeling good on his birthday. So happy birthday, Bill. Hurry up and get back here. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney?
Nothing tonight.
All right. Then manager.
Thank you. Just a couple of things I'd like to request in executive session on personnel following the regular meeting. And then I'd like just a few minutes to make the presentation regarding the home rule question, and talk a little bit about some of the upcoming dates for state presentations. Perfect. Okay. The first thing I wanted to mention is just some upcoming dates. We have additional presentations. We have one coming up at the Westmont Senior Center on Monday, October 22nd. That's going to be at 11:00 a.m. We have another one on Wednesday, October 24th, at Marker School at 7:00 p.m. And then we have an early morning presentation. It's primarily scheduled for the downtown Westmont Business Alliance, but the chamber is involved in this as well. This will be at 8:00 a.m. at the Westmont Center. And then we added one today. Saturday, we did a presentation at the library. There was a little bit of a mix-up on the time. Originally, it was scheduled for one. The library had asked us to reschedule it. It was rescheduled for two, and I understood that there were some people that came at one. We did have a small attendance at two. So what I told the library was we would try to add another one on a Saturday. So we have one on November 3rd at 1:00 p.m. And I promise that time will not change on Saturday. And then the last presentation we have scheduled will be at the November 5th regular village board meeting here at 7:00 p.m. We have a couple of other presentations scheduled, but they're more for some of the transitional care centers that we have for folks that can't get out to some of these public meetings. Okay. Many of you have seen this already, but I'll try to go through the slides in a fairly efficient manner, and then we'll see if we have any questions. Some of these slides have changed. Some of you that were at the State of the Village address saw some of the changes. Some of the changes have been mostly to reflect some of the questions that we've gotten since we started the presentation. But the first point is that because our population dropped below 25,000 as a result of the special census in 2010, we were required by statute to put on the general election ballot, which is November 6th. The question says, shall the village of Westmont cease to be a home rule unit? If you vote yes, then we would cease to be a home rule unit. If you vote no, we would not. One of the -- let me back up here for a second. One of the things that I wanted to mention, and at a number of these meetings, and I've tried to mention this at the public meetings, we've had some questions. Why aren't there more board members there? Why aren't there other staff people involved? We can't be advocating one way or the other whether or not you should vote for or against this. We're trying to present the facts, and there actually is a law that says that if you are taking or appear to be taking the side regarding the question, you could be charged with a misdemeanor A, I believe, the first time. Subsequent charges would be a misdemeanor B with up to a potential sentence of a year in jail. So it's something that we take very seriously, and we're trying to just try to provide information and try to answer questions that people have. Okay, what is home rule? Back in the late 1800s, there was a Judge Dillon in Iowa who ruled in a case that was called Clinton versus Cedar Rapids, and it was 1868, in which he defined this concept that municipalities only have those powers that are expressly granted by the state. Municipalities, that is cities, villages, towns, however they're called in various states, are creatures of the state, and therefore they cannot have any power greater than what the state grants to them. This particular local ruling eventually became kind of the rule across the country, and hence became known as Dillon's Rule. And up until the Constitution changed here in 1970, that was what applied here in Illinois. In 1970, the Constitution was changed. It created two different classifications. Non-home rule communities continue to only have powers expressly granted by state law. Home rule communities, which are 25,000 population or greater, or if they elect to be home rule by referendum, their powers are limited only by the laws, but that includes the Constitution, both U.S. and the state, and the Bill of Rights, and are expressly prohibited from certain powers and authority that may be done so by the statute, by the Constitution or by state law. So why home rule here in Westmont? We'll talk in a couple of minutes a little bit more about the makeup of our community, but there were two main reasons. The village applied in 2003, which is the earliest time after the 2000 census that we could apply for a special census. We felt like, based on development in the community, that we were well over the 25,000 population mark at that point, and we actually applied, wrote our check, made our application to the Census Bureau. And because we were so close to exceeding that threshold, the mayor and the board said, you know, let's step back. We want to make sure the community understands what it means to become home rule. We actually did not go forward with the special census for about four more years, and that represented a loss of about $500 and something over $500,000 by waiting for those four years. We did some special programs where we had people come in and talk about home rule, what that means, tried to provide as much information to the community as we could. We created a fiscal review ad hoc committee in 2006. They gave a two-part recommendation in January. One of the recommendations was to go ahead and go forward with the special census, try to achieve home rule status to capture that revenue. The other piece of why home rule became important to the village has to do with the multifamily licensing program, which under Illinois law, you're required to be home rule to implement. And I'll talk about that again in a minute here. So these graphs are kind of hard to read, but this is just for kind of historical context. Get away from the mic, sorry. I just find this interesting going back in our files, the number of times we've actually done special censuses. Based on our files, we did one all the way back in 1953, and you get a sense of how rapidly the community grew over the decades. Since I've been here, we've done special censuses in 1986, 1998, and then again, we were prepared to do one in 2003, but that one got postponed to 2007. And then you see our official population for 2010, which we are in the process of appealing under the appeal process that the U.S. Census Bureau has. So one of the points I wanted to make is, due to the time period and the issues involved, the village, the mayor and the village board took great care to try to help the community understand what this means to the community. We needed to capture revenue that was being lost, that would go towards operating costs for the village and capital costs. The other thing, the other piece of it is the multifamily licensing program. This graph, and again, as I mentioned last week at the State of the Village, I apologize for the small nature of it, but I understand that it shows up pretty well on the screen, the way they're shooting with the cable TV. I don't know if we have it up on the website yet, but when I talked to our IT director on Friday, it was supposed to go up there, these two separate graphs, so that you could click and kind of zoom in. But what I wanted to point out is Westmont is the black community right here on the end. And this is a percentage of owner-occupied housing, and these are most of the communities in DuPage County, as well as a number of communities that already have multifamily licensing programs that are here in the suburban area. So as you can see, we have a very low percentage of owner-occupied housing in our community. This graph shows a little more kind of delving into the census data, and it's the number of complexes with 10 or more units per thousand residents. I apologize that we don't have Westmont better highlighted here, but we're right here on the end. As you can see, we're not the highest. Lyle is the highest, but we're right there in second place in terms of the number of complexes with 10 or more units per thousand residents. If you look at our community, it's long and narrow. If you look at census data in terms of where our population density is, you know, we start at 35th Street, we go all the way to 67th Street. Our population density is right around 59th Street. So if you look at the map, you really get a sense that we've got a large concentration of some pretty large complexes, some built back in the '60s and the '70s that are in the lower part of the community. And those have become concerns in recent years of the boards and the mayor to be able to implement this licensing program, to go in there, do inspections, make sure people are compliant with codes, and to help improve the quality of life for the residents who are living in those particular communities. What are the advantages, I guess, from the standpoint of a resident as far as home rule is concerned? You have, as a resident, you have greater access, greater accountability to your elected officials. As a non-home rule community, we're more reliant upon the state to give us powers and grant us authority to deal with local problems. You can go and talk to your local legislator, your local representative or senator. They're one or two people down in Springfield. They don't have that great of an influence, but you can come here a couple of times a month and talk to your elected officials. We have open forum where you can speak to the board for three minutes. You can even get on the agenda for certain items to discuss with them your feelings about things. And we've had special meetings about issues that have been of great importance to our community. So that's something that you don't have, obviously, dealing with the state legislature. You're less dependent on the state, again, because the local community can craft legislation to try to deal with issues that are significant. There are less state mandates that are required for home rule communities. There is a broader ability to tax non-residents, and I want to be clear, we talked about two pieces of this before. We talked about the two-and-a-half cent gas tax and the half percent sales tax that we implemented since becoming home rule. Those aren't exclusively applied to non-residents. They apply across to anyone who, you know, purchases things in Westmont or purchases gas. But it is the ability to capture revenue from outside the community, to help offset some of our costs and our operating costs that maybe we might be more reliant on property tax and have to tax just the residents for. We also have greater flexibility with the use of hotel motel tax funds. Prior to becoming home rule, we had built up some decent balances in that fund, and we were restricted because the fund can only be used to promote overnight stay and tourism in the community. And since we became home rule, we were able to use a lot of that funding in our general fund to help pay for many of our operating programs. Some other advantages of being a home rule community include you're able to borrow money at lower interest rates. That has not been the track record of this community. I would kind of go on a lemon venture to say that I don't think that's going to be a great habit of this community. I've been here almost 27 years, and this community, compared to most communities, has not issued much debt at all, whereas a lot of communities rely on debt to go out and do capital infrastructure projects. This community has kind of paid as you go. And we'll talk about that here in a minute when we talk a little bit about our cash reserves. You have the ability to implement broader impact fees if you have a project, and we're not, obviously, in an economy where we've got large projects coming into town, but you can implement broader impact fees where you might be able to offset costs that that development might have on your community. You can impact fees as a non-home rule community, but you have some greater authority to do that. Neighborhood preservation flexibility. The example I like to use with that is the multifamily licensing program. That's a specific problem that we identified that we wanted to address in our community, and as a home rule community, we were able to pass legislation to do that. And I might add that we went through a year-long process in which we tried to involve a lot of public input to do that. And I know many of our neighboring communities that have implemented similar programs haven't gone through that. And I point that out because, again, that's an example of how this board and past boards have always operated, that they want to get public input, they want to be transparent, and they want to make the best decisions that they can based on the feedback that they get from residents. Protects the village from county home rule powers. That's not an issue at this point in time, but if the county were to become home rule, and we were already home rule, or any community is, then you're not subject to their powers as a home rule community or a home rule county. More flexible powers for local problems. That's kind of what we're talking about. It's kind of hard to define what that is because, again, you're only -- it doesn't spell out specifically in the statute what you can do. So if something specific comes up to your community, you have broader authority and power to be able to address that problem for that community or for that, you know, parts of your community where you have those issues. Arguments against? No property tax caps. This is always a big one. The village has, since we've been home rule, we have adhered to the, what they call the PTAL, the property tax legislation, for our property increases to the extent that we have only levied more for that portion for the police pension fund that we're entitled to under the property tax cap. And we specifically did that because we fell behind in our payments, and as many people know, this is a huge issue across the state right now with the pension funds being underfunded. And this board had some meetings with the police pension fund, and at that time, there was some different targets, but there are still targets legislatively in place that we have to meet. And if we don't pay and fund these funds to the extent that we should, eventually, the state can actually just take that money from the monies that they owe us. So again, I think it shows that this village has always, always tries to do the right thing in terms of complying with the law. We don't just do the way the state has dealt with some of their pensions and just kind of push the issue down and let somebody else deal with it. We're trying to get a handle on it and be responsible. Again, whoops. Another big category is potential broad use, power abuse. As I said a few minutes ago, you're only restricted by those things that the state says as a home rule community you can't do. So it's kind of hard to define what a community might do with its home rule power, and a segment of the community or, you know, individuals in the community might feel it's something that the board or the council passes is an abuse of that power. But again, you have the ability to come here and talk to your legislatures and legislators and let them know firsthand how you feel about a particular issue or a particular program or service. Unfounded arguments. Home rule does not authorize the ability to ignore the Bill of Rights or the U.S. or the Illinois Constitution. It doesn't create another governmental taxing body. It doesn't create another layer of government. We, here in Illinois, have the greatest number of layers of government already in the country, and this does not in any way create more layers of government. Another unfounded argument is that our multifamily licensing program generates additional revenue for the village. Our studies actually show that it just, well, pays a little bit more than breaking even. I think it's about $10,000 additionally per year is what we make, but it's certainly not significant in the overall budget picture. Another statement that's been made is village infrastructure suffered at the expense of personnel cost. Since the economic downturn in 2007, many, if not most, communities have put off a lot of infrastructure improvements, and we're not going to suggest otherwise. We have had, you know, struggles with that. But I think if you look at these next couple of graphs, you'll see what we've done since 2007. We've been able to actually reduce our overall workforce, both part-time, well, our part-time number of employees have gone up a little bit here in recent years, but our total workforce has gone down. Our full-time workforce has gone down. The reasons our numbers are fairly high on the part-time side is because we have a very cost-effective fire department that relies heavily on part-time staff, and that's where a majority of those numbers are at. The way we run our program is actually a model here in Illinois. We've gotten recognition from the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus on how the program is run as a very efficient and cost-saving program for the residents. This graph shows employee salaries. You will see that since 2007, the salaries did go up. We did have some collective bargaining commitments that we were able to deal with when the contracts came up, and we were able to negotiate some concessions, and that's why you start to see those salaries drop. So I, again, I want to point out that salary costs have been dropping the last few years despite the fact that we've become home rule, and salary positions have been dropping. This diagram I wanted to show you is our effort to actually meet a guideline policy that the board established back in 2002, in which we were supposed to set aside a 20% emergency reserve. We have never actually been at that level. As you can see, we started to build towards that up until the economic downturn in 2007. Things kind of bottomed out, and we're starting to recover again. And that's been, you know, despite the fact that we've cut back payroll, we've cut back positions and salary costs, and the board, I believe, has done an excellent job in terms of managing our policy, our budget in terms of the policies and programs and the services that we put in place the last couple of years to help recover these reserves and try to get us back to where we should be. What is the loss of this revenue that we've estimated mean to the village? These are just some examples to kind of give you some perspective. I'm not saying that these are things that the board is going to do, but our estimated potential loss is over $2 million that's currently budgeted. That will mean probably budget cuts, programs, service reductions, or looking at alternative revenue increases. Just to give you some sense of what these numbers mean to our overall budget, our police department's total budget this year is a little over $8 million. So if we were to simply apply that $2 million, that's about 27% of that operating budget. If you apply it to our fire department's operating budget, that's about 50% of their operating budget. In the case of public works, it's about 53% of their operating budget. If we were to spread that across all three of those areas, that's about 13%. Another way to look at it, just again, I'm not saying that this is what the board is going to do or will seriously consider doing, but $2 million roughly represents about 20 police officers in terms of benefits and salary. So it would have a substantial impact on our workforce if we lose that revenue. Okay, what are some of the abuse safeguards? Obviously, elections. If you're not happy with the folks that are making the decisions on the policies and the programs and the budgets, we have election cycles every few years. There's the voter rescission option for the home rule question. It can be placed on the ballot, and the voters can vote it out. That has happened in several communities over the years. In about 31 rescission elections, there's been four cases rejected recently. The petition, if you want to get this on the ballot, requires 10% of the voters from the last mayoral election. And then legislative preemption. Again, the legislature can preempt home rule power. It does take greater percentage of legislators voting in favor of it than a simple majority. It's a three-fifths majority that's required. Another safeguard is judicial review, obviously. It could be taken to the courts if something was considered to be an issue, and the courts could decide. There are the constitutional protections that we talked about before, and of course, General Assembly imposed obligations on both home rule and non-home rule communities. Sometimes they make those, they impose both those kinds, those things on both sets of communities. As an example, the Freedom of Information Act, the Open Meetings Act, employee right to collectively bargain, those things are, you're not exempt as a home rule community. The last slide I have are some links to some studies. These are available on our website if you want to download them and take a look at them. These, many of these have been done by the NIU Center of Governmental Studies. They look specifically at home rule authority in terms of how it's affected property tax and what communities have done with that home rule authority over the years. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, actually, I have one, just out of curiosity. You talked about the hotel motel tax dollars. What, you know, what could it be spent on if we lose home rule status? Or what couldn't it be spent on?
Well, that, as I understand it, is not an issue that has been cited or is decisive in the sense of the statute or in case law. There could be an argument made that you would be subject to the original There could be an argument made that you would be subject to the original restrictions that go with non-home rule communities, but there's also an argument, because it hasn't really been cited, that it could continue. And I'll let the village attorney, I think he could comment better on it.
You were wondering what it can be spent on if it's, for, in general, for a non-home rule community, what do you use hotel motel tax dollars for?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's what I meant.
I was talking about it could be spent on overnight stay and tourism. Trying to put, you know, the phrase that we all used to always hear was put heads in beds. Many communities stretch that definition a bit, but generally speaking, that, I mean, that is what the statute requires. And because of that, we were, that's why we built up the reserves, you know, you only had specific things that you could spend it on. One time we were, when the economy was doing well, we were receiving about $800,000 a year in hotel motel tax. Now, we've seen with the economy recovering somewhat, those numbers come back up, but we're not near that by any stretch of the imagination yet.
So we'd have to figure out what to do with, you know, like over half a million dollars that we could only spend on putting it back into tourism for Westmont and promoting hotel stays in Westmont?
Potentially, that is true, that you would have to redirect that.
So no special funding for fireworks or anything like that?
I'm sorry?
I mean, it would have to go directly to just tourism and promoting the hotels and the restaurants, correct?
Right, but I'm sorry, I missed the last part of your comment.
Restaurants, you can't use it for, well, if that's for tourism.
I mean, we did things like if there were, if there were a national amateur golf
Yes.
event at Oprah Kills Marriott and they were soliciting the village for donations and we felt like if we, if the village helped support that event, it would result in overnight stays, that's proper use of the money. Also advertising through the DuPage.
Convention Tourism Bureau.
Tourism Bureau or our own advertisements, things like that that lets people know there's hotels here where you could stay and Westmont's a nice place to come visit.
And we use funding to help fund the Westmont Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau for the commercial, the tourism part of their mission statement. I don't.
And the village can still do that?
We could still do that.
I mean, the money still can be used for that purpose.
Yes, it doesn't say you can't use it for that any longer. You know, for many years, we had a promote Westmont Commission that was an advisory body to the board that would review applications for how that money would be spent and make recommendations to the village board on how that money would be spent. If you go back and look at the long, fairly long history of that commission, there were a pretty wide variety of things. But again, the central concept was trying to promote tourism or somehow promote the village outside the boundaries of the village, whether that would even be in DuPage County, but hopefully even much broader than that, to try to draw people to come into the community, shop here, spend money in the restaurants, hopefully stay overnight.
No, sir.
It's up to the mayor's board.
Not this evening, no, sir. Not this evening, no, sir. This is, this is a voting meeting, no, sir, not tonight. There's no public input, no, sir.
If you want to stay around, I'll be happy to talk to you afterwards.
No, sir, there is no public comment this evening. It's always been that way, sir, thank you.
Anything else?
Any other questions from the board?
Nope. Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
I'm gonna close this off.
Okay, thank you. Items to be removed from consent agenda. Do we have any request of any items to be removed?
There is a sheet of corrected minutes there.
Saw that.
It was the typo on the first set. Yeah, it's on the meeting to order, so.
Okay, then if we have nothing to be removed, then I will consider a vote on the consent agenda.
Motion approved, Scott.
Second, Emory.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Klebinau.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Okay, unfinished business, Southwestmont Business District Public Hearing. Board to consider ordinances of the Southwestmont Business District Tax Increment Financing District. One, to fix the date, time, and place for the public hearing. Two, to establish an interested parties registry.
Do we have to, can we vote on them together?
These are separate ordinances, so.
Okay. Motion to approve section one.
Second, Scott.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Klebinau.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Motion to approve section two for establishment of an interested parties registry. Emory.
Second, Scott.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Klebinau.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Next, neighbors publication agreement. Board to consider an ordinance approving an agreement with Emerald Marketing, Inc. to provide for the publication of a bimonthly local news magazine.
Motion to approve, Emory.
Second, Nero.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Klebinau.
Yes.
Two business, variance request, 430 South Linden Avenue. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following request from Tiffany Tang for zoning code variance to allow for the existing driveway to be resurfaced and a new rear yard paver patio. I'm being told these can all be taken as one item. Number one, lot coverage greater than 35% maximum allowed. Two, a driveway to encroach in the side yard setback, a reduction of minimum required lot area for existing non-conforming lot.
Motion to approve, Emory.
Second, Nero.
Questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Klebinau.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Klebinau.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Next, massage establishment license, Heavenly Feet, 151 West Ogden Avenue. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following. One, increasing the number of massage establishment licenses within the village from eight to nine to allow for an issuance of a massage establishment license to Heavenly Feet at 151 West Ogden Avenue. And then a separate would be issuing a massage establishment license to Heavenly Feet at 151 West Ogden Avenue. Motion on number one.
They're actually combined, sorry.
Combined?
There.
Motion on both.
So moved, Emory.
Second, Nero.
On to question. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Emory.
No.
Trustee Klebinau.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
No.
Trustee Fleming.
No.
Trustee Nero.
No.
Next, Holy Trinity Church Oktoberfest 2012. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following two requests from Holy Trinity Church for an Oktoberfest event from 11:00 a.m. to 10:30 p.m. on Saturday, October 20th, 2012. One, closure of street parking spaces and sidewalk areas on East Richmond Street, west of Linden in front of Holy Trinity School. And two, issuance of a license for amplified sound during the event.
Can they be taken together?
Yes.
Motion to approve, Emory.
Second, Nero.
On to question. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Klebinau.
Yes.
Next, Downtown Trick or Treat Trail, 2012. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following two requests for Westmont Chamber of Commerce-sponsored trick-or-treat trail event on Saturday, October 27th, 2012, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Number one, parking lot closure of one-third of the Cass and Burlington Public Lot. Two, issuance of a license for amplified sound.
Motion to approve, Emory.
Second, Nero.
On to question. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Klebinau.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Next, intergovernmental agreement, Village of Westmont Community Unit School District 201. Board to consider an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Westmont and Community Unit School District 201 for the purpose of providing security at the school board meetings.
Motion.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve, Emory.
Second, Scott.
On to question. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Klebinau.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Next, National Community Planning Month. Board to consider motion proclaiming October as Community Planning Month in the Village of Westmont.
Motion to have our acting department head read the proclamation.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Community Planning Month proclamation. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places, and whereas community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live, and whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community, and whereas the full benefits of planning require public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation, and whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories, and whereas the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners, endorse National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions sound planning and plan implementation make to the quality of our settlements and environment, and whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of planning commissions and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the Village of Westmont, and whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners of the Village of Westmont and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the month of October 2012 is hereby designated as Community Planning Month in the Village of Westmont in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Month.
Yay.
Thank you.
Very nice, well done.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Oops. Second, Nero.
On to question. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Klebinau.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Next, sock drive donation box request. Board to consider motion granting a request from Bethel Lutheran Church to place donation bins in the village hall and Westmont train station to collect new socks as part of community outreach from October 16th through November 16th, 2012.
Motion to approve, Emory.
Second, Scott.
Questions?
Just a statement to emphasize that it's new socks and even though it's a church, don't put the holy ones in. Little pun.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Klebinau.
Yes.
Do we have any miscellaneous this evening?
I've got a miscellaneous, an aside.
Okay, go for it.
Sometimes we have multiple items under an agenda and you kind of question, are we taking this as one ordinance or two? We try to list in the wording of the motion itself, it's either a motion to approve an ordinance or a motion to approve ordinances, whether it's one vote or multiple votes.
We'll look for that as our cue.
Yeah, and we try to group things together in a single ordinance when possible, but if they're really diverse subject matters or we think that you may make one approval, for example, a setback, but there might be some controversy over another one, then we break them into multiple ordinances. But to the extent possible for efficiency, we'll group them together as one.
So we need to read where there's an S after the end of it or not?
Well, that didn't happen under the massage establishment, did it?
It was, that was considered one.
That was one, that's right.
But the Southwestmont Business District was to consider ordinances.
Ah, now you tell us.
Now we know, yeah.
Should go back and check.
How many years have you waited to?
Should we go back now and draw this?
Yeah, well, I've got something else for you to know, right?
Sure.
Okay. Is there anything else?
Yeah. Motion to adjourn to executive session, Emory.
The purpose of? Personnel. Second, Scott.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Klebinau.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
We stand adjourned to executive session.